All right. Call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Monday, March 4th. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Sulfur.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Janzen.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Le- uh, Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogel Singer.
Here.
Item number two on the agenda tonight is a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone. You come up to use the microphone at the podium, if anybody speaks out there, make sure you adjust it to whatever height we need and make sure that we can hear you. Item number three is items have been removed, editor changed. I do not believe we have anything to change on this one. Matters for the, from the public for items not on the agenda. For anybody here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Come on up and just give us your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Linda Sauner. Good evening. I'm, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a resident of Batavia for 41 years. I have been involved as a resident in various environmental projects in Batavia over the years. The mosquito project, the recycling project under the auspices of the League of Women Voters, and Batavians for Clean Energy and Conservation. Climate change has been on my radar screen for literally decades. And I'm extremely grateful for the direction our community is headed in addressing this is, this issue and having the foresight and courage to take on the issue of single-use bags. I have a friend who is a biology professor at NIU and does research in, in the fragile and u- unique ecosystem of the Galapagos Islands on a regular basis. In a recent conversation, she told me about efforts there to manage plastic pollution. Signs are posted all over the islands with the message, "Plastic is not fantastic." I will not engage tonight in listing the nearly limitless adverse effects of the ubiquitous plastic bag, but strongly encourage anyone who doubts the essential need to deal with this issue to just go online. Yes, the evidence is overwhelming and seemingly insurmountable, but we, as not only Batavians, but inhabitants of Planet Earth, need to take action. It is hard, it is heartening that other communities are tackling this difficult issue as well. I appreciate the input given by local retailers at the February 13th Cow Meeting regarding the single-use bag fee, in which they spoke of the resistance of customers and stressed-out employees. Over the past few months, I myself have engaged in brief conversations with employees at various Batavia stores to get a sense of the degree of acceptance of the bag fee. The varied responses indicate to me a lack of education about the need for the bag fee and the, and understandably, lack of support. We must find effective ways to support and work with Batavia merchants and educate our citizens about this issue. Anthropologist Margaret Mead has often quoted saying, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. In this time and place, I believe that that applies to communities as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to item five, which is a discussion on the single-use bag fee revenue usage. Who wants to start this off? Basically, the, the list that we got, we've got, I think, two lists. We got one in an email today from the Environmental Commission and then the one that staff put together on the 229 memo. So I guess we get to pick tonight what we're gonna do. Mark?
I guess I'll just start. I mean, I understand what staff is saying with the rebates and incentives, and there's a program already for low income. I guess when I mentioned it at the committee meeting before, I was not just targeting low income, I was just saying that this should be a thing that's available to everybody, just like the EV chargers is available to everybody. Said it before, and the Environmental Commission and others have admitted this, is the singlemost thing that we can do to improve or to reduce our usage of fossil fuels is to improve the efficiency of our homes. That's gotta be a thing. We're already a tree city. I don't see us having to plant hundreds of thousands of dollars for the trees to make improvements here. We do a really good job already with that. I think that giving something, literally giving something back to residents is more important. I think we need to switch these into percentages as well that get reevaluated, or not the percentages get reevaluated, but we have figures out here that are going to change over time. So this is the money we have right now, but in six months, or in a month, we have more money. We just need to be able to keep track of, hey, what, this is the percentage of the funds that come in, and this goes to this fund, this goes to this fund, et cetera, et cetera, so that we can have somewhere listed and let people know, hey, there's $75,000 available at $1,000 apiece, or whatever it is for an incentive or rebate, or whatever for some of the energy efficiency things at home. An X percentage per year can go to purchasing bags that are available for people to pick up at City Hall. And, and that's kinda where I stand on it.
That was one of the things that I thought of, because I, I see that, I would like to see this, and that the revenue from that does come down. I, I don't expect it to stay at whatever it is to start with. If it's working, that number should come down. So I think you're right that the percentages would probably be the best way to split that up, and I think tonight we just need to decide exactly what we want to spend that on. Do we want to spend it on outreach? Do we want to spend it on bags that we give away? Do we want to spend it on, what type of programming do we want to do with it? And I think you're right, especially, and I don't remember if it was in staff memoir and the other one that I read, about using a cutoff of when a house is built to be criteria for what we could use to try to bring that number down, you know, to, to make the energy usage better. And I don't know if, I think it was 1950 or something, it was referenced in there. I almost think that that should probably be like 1980. You know, to, to make more houses have it available, because I think a lot of the older stock that we have in town has already gone through some renovations. But I think that the next level beyond that with probably not as efficient water heaters, furnaces, air conditioning, all those things that can be improved are still in those houses, you know, 30, 40, 50 years newer.
Yeah, I think you're looking at anything that's 20 years plus is, hits that, because that's when everybody's water heaters and furnaces and ACs and everything starts to die after about 20 years. So it's gotta be, I mean, I would say anything built in the last 20 years is eligible for it. Maybe in the last five years you don't, because of the fact that you've, you know, our value has increased and, and construction quality has increased and stuff like that. But 20 years ago, you absolutely are ready. I'm, I sit there and I look at my wa- my water heater all the time, and I'm like, damn it, that thing's gonna fail. I know it's gonna fail. And I'm just like, I know I'm kicking the can, I probably should have replaced it five years ago, and I'm just crossing my fingers every morning that I get a hot shower, so...
Don't change yourself, Mark.
Sarah.
Yeah, and the house age point was in the list that we got from the Batavia Environmental Commission today. It was 1950, that's cited in there. We have this team of experts who works tirelessly to figure out the best thing that we should do. We've asked them for their insight. I appreciate the list Mac sent, too. There was a lot of valid points in there, but I would be in favor of going with the list from the Environmental Commission, and we can work that, that dollars out there into percentages to kinda use this as, you know, maybe a model moving forward. I don't know, see if it works. But that would be what I would suggest.
I guess, um, I've changed my mind on this several times. I've thought about all the different issues that come with this. One thing that I remind myself, though, is that we're all on the same team. We all want the same thing, which is a planet to give to our children. We all care about the environment, so there's no wrong answers tonight, I don't think. It's just different philosophies. But I do agree, Mark, that one of the biggest impacts that we can make is that, is carbon. Sure, home construction got better over, over time. Improvements made in 1950s, whatnot. In 1993, someone made a mistake at my property and forgot to fill up the insulation on a wall, and I was bleeding out in, uh, energy, had no idea, until I had a study that was, that was done there. I would say, though, to be fair, if we could set some sort of income limit on this, anyone earning maybe under a certain dollar amount that actually has no money to put to this kind of improvement or this kind of study would greatly benefit. Whether or not they could take the next jump and make the improvements is another question. There might be another round of funding that would need to be made after that. But I think if we threw $100,000 at this problem and just simply did an energy assessment on the entire town and encouraged people with means to pay for their own, if they can, we would have a massive impact on our contributions negatively towards, towards the environment. Second thing would be, um, arming the people that are in front of the squeaky wheels, literally with the shopping carts. I, I can tell you the number of times I've seen Batavians make retail workers cry because of the misunderstanding of the fee. If there was a way to hand out a bag to someone who's complaining a lot, I mean, I know that that's probably not the best thing to reward somebody, but if someone is complaining, I'd say, fine, here's your free bag. And I would love to include a letter on the inside that says, you want me to yell at somebody, yell at me, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you for 45 minutes about why this is a, this is a good thing, why you're helping, because this is probably where we've, we've let ourselves down, is we have not found a way to attack the problem of people who misunderstand what our good intentions are. We are not trying to save, save the planet by ourselves. We should, at least should be talking about, this is the most we've talked about, a national or global issue since I've joined council in 14 years. And I think this is all positive conversation that we're having. We should not shun from this. We've, if anything, we should keep coming back to issues like this where we can make a difference. And again, no wrong answers tonight, any decision we make will be the right one.
Your Honor.
Well, as you all know, I sent you a memo on Friday about my views on this whole thing. I guess I kinda share what Alderman Janzen has just said. I think we would make a major breakthrough with this community if we put the bag out there with the city's name on it and said, here, we'll give you two bags, or whatever the number's going to be, and I think you'd have a lot of people take them, and then they wouldn't go to the store and have to buy the bag, they'd just throw it in their car, and every time they went into a store, they'd take the bag with them, get their stuff, and come back out. And so I, I just think it's a winner for the community to bring the number of plastic bags down, and that seems to be the thing that I see blowing around town and in the parks, and, you know, I'm, I bet you a week doesn't go by that out here, I'll pick up something out of McDonald's or one of the other food stores, that somebody had a plastic bag and took their thing out, or whatever they bought, and threw the bag down on the ground, and the things were blown around. So I just think that's, it's kind of a curse on us right at the moment, and that we should take some of that money that we now have in the bank and buy ourselves some nice bags that have a environmental statement on them, or saying something to the effect that, we're here to help make this a better environment for future generations, please use this bag. And I think there'd be a lot of people that have done it. As you know, I just said, I'm gonna be talking to all the senior living communities in the next few weeks, and I'm fully intending to bring up this idea to them that, you know, we like to get, when if you're, many of them don't go to the store that much, but when they do, I think if you said, we'll give you a, a nice cloth bag that you can go in there and use, I bet you most of them would use it. I mean, it, it would just be that much more attraction and give them a feeling that they're doing something to help the environment. And I, that's my whole reason for, for doing it, is I think we have the real chance here to do it. The other thing I find very interesting is, Batavia's the only one here in the region that's in the immediate Fox Valley here that's doing this. You know, I've talked to some of the other cities, and they don't want to get involved with it. And so I'm thinking if we could do this and show the world that, hey, Batavia's giving away the, the cloth bags and it's bringing down the number of plastics they got going out of their stores, maybe some other people would think about that as a realistic thing. But I just think we need to do something kind of off the track here to get us back on the track as far as getting the public to understand what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do it, and that we, the city, are gonna use some of the money that we've made from this bag tax to buy the cloth bags that will make them, what? It's a what?
It's not a tax, it's a fee.
A fee, whatever we want to call it. There, many people refer to it as a tax, so...
Taxes you don't have the choice on. The fee you have the choice on. You get to make the decision when you go into that store, whether or not you're gonna pay that if you want to take a plastic bag. The tax, you don't have a choice on. If we raise taxes, the public doesn't have a chance to change that.
I agree with you there. I would tell you that I, I've, I've witnessed a lot of people get stuff, get a bag and never pay for it. That's a, that's a very common thing. If you go into Target out there now, there's a big sign that greets you at the door that says, please bring in your, your, your cloth bag, or whatever, and we'll give you five cents off on your bag for bringing your own bag in, off your bill, we'll give you five cents off every bag you bring in here. So, I mean, there's people kind of trying to get around us here and playing, you know, the public against the city a little bit, and I, I'm not sure that this bag thing is a real popular win and thing for the city of Batavia.
Actually, um, just to clarify, Target has all, has for a very long time have had that five cents off if you bring your own bag.
Now they're advertising.
Now they're advertising, but they've always had that policy, so that's not new.
Uh, this is a question for city staff. You recommended Jute Bags. Do you have a rough price point, how many bags we can get for how many dollars on that yet?
Yeah, each bag is probably gonna be between three and $6, so that doesn't get us as far as we might think.
That's one of the reasons I upped my ante is how much money I think we should give, because you've shut, you shared that figure with me the other day. And I mean, to me, that's a, it's kind of a one-time cost, but I think it could do a world of good as far as bringing down the number of plastic bags gonna be then circulated in town.
I like the idea of the bag. I think, and I don't know if time is an issue or anything in coordination, but to bring it one step further and make it a community event, you know, we get the school involved in designing banners or Water Street Studio or something, but if you make it a cool, fun bag that the community gets behind, they could vote for and stuff, now it becomes something, people kinda turn their mentality around this, and it becomes more of a community thing, so just throw that there, out there.
We would use the city logo, you know, to show that, I, I feel like that, that keeps us involved in it, the city involved in it. Makes it, I think, fairly simple. I don't know the logistics of what it would be to print that on a bag, how much that changes the price or anything.
I think you could look at it being about an average of $5 per bag, even with the logo on it.
Okay. Jen?
I'm not really a huge fan of the bag, because the people that we are, they're not gonna change their behavior, and if we hand them a bag, I could see them tossing the bag back into the person's face, saying, I don't want this. I, I love the idea, I love the idea of trying to get the city around it, you know, to create something, but I think it's gonna be limited. I think it's, again, I, I just see if we try and hand somebody a bag based on principle, they're gonna be, it, they're not gonna use it. We're not gonna change their behavior by doing that. But if the rest of the council, you know, I would go in and support it, I don't think it's gonna be as many bags as we think, and I don't know if it's gonna really hit the people that are so angry about this.
Laura?
The suggestion would be that we have the bags here at City Hall, so that people are coming that, who want a bag, as opposed to, I, I do think what Alderman Baron is saying, if we're just handing out bags at the store, it might just go into people's collections of reusable bags that they have at home and aren't bringing to the store today. So if they come to City Hall and pick it up, that would be some indication that they would really like this and that they want to use it. So, yeah.
And I don't think that's addressing the people that are being brutal and abusive to the people out at the stores.
You want them knocking on City Hall? I'd rather put them up at the customer service section at the Kohl's Department. I know some ladies there that could really take care of an angry customer. It, it might be helpful.
To do what?
To, to leave it up to customer service if they want to take a stash of them. I, I've, actually, I, I used to work at Kohl's. They, they can wrestle a really angry customer down, and if they're gonna, you're saying...
It's the angry customers, it's the angry customers that get the bags, not every customer.
It's the kid who shouldn't have to deal with that. It's the store manager, that if they were truly armed with a stack of them, it'd be an opportunity to have, have the discussion. And you're not, we're not gonna change everybody, we're not.
And that might be a discussion that we need to start with the, the retailers, is to find out if they want to come in and talk about this, and if they think that that would help them, then give them bags to give away.
They did and they don't.
And, and ha- and have them available here at City Hall, have them available during a farmer's market, you know, to promote that. We can have a booth there, I'm sure that that's not a problem with Main Street to do that. I mean, I think there's places we can give them away and educate people at the same time. You know, if we're out at a public event and we do that, and that's where we give them away, I think that's also a way, without having to confront somebody in, you know, line at a store, waiting, or, you know, upset about it, do it a different way. Mark?
I guess I can see having, buying a couple thousand bags and having them here at City Hall and seeing how it goes, but to distribute them to, I mean, several of the stores that came out here, they're so against it anyway, they're gonna be like, no, keep your bag, I don't want it. But I don't even know how logistically you manage that at a Kohl's, Jewel, Walmart. How many bags are you gonna give them? And now, now we've got about hundreds of thousands of bags to distribute to, to 15, 20 stores that are part of this. So I, I would rather have a couple thousand bags and then see how it goes. And again, farmer's market, you know, Fat Fest, all the things that we do as a community have them available, and then see how it goes, see how long it takes us to go through that. But again, if it was a percentage, then we could continue to buy some. Or, hey, six months later, we have 1,200 bags left because barely anybody's coming to get them. Rather than just, hey, here's an angry customer, hey, go to customer service, if you don't like this, they'll get you a free bag. That would, I would lose my mind if somebody said that to me in a store, to be like, forget it, refund my purchase, I'm outta here. Because it would just, that would just really throw me over the edge if somebody was gonna sit there and try and push a bag. I mean, I agree with what Jen is saying. I think that that would be, it would, we put ourselves in a bad situation because we didn't have this discussion a year ago, and now we're trying to reverse it. I don't think that's gonna make us look any better.
Yeah, I think a number of things are coming out here. I, I would say I wasn't in favor of the bags either at first, because honestly, just as a layman, if, if we have a bag fee that no one likes, and then we buy more bags with it, people, you know, whether they're plastic or not, it's, it's a perception of, really, we're buying more bags with the bag fee money, you know? I can only imagine what, what the online forums will say, do with that one. Factual or not, right? But I think some good ideas are possibly getting laid out here in terms of small number of bags to start out, because I'm right there with you, I'm like, oh, oh gosh, okay, we got all these bags, now, you know, what if enough people don't come get them at City Hall, we have all this surplus? But to Alderman Serone's point, this, it gives us an opportunity to get back to what I believe is the real problem here, and that is a messaging and perception problem. I say it all the time, but it's the reality of it. Likely, you could, I have any one of our constituents, bring them in here, and no one's gonna tell us that less plastic bags is worse for, right, for the environment. No one's gonna sit here and tell us that. One less plastic bag is, is one less plastic bag. I think everyone wants that. I think it's, it's the execution and the messaging and the perception of what's going on outside these four walls that really we just need a reset on. And, and that's the hard question, how do we do that? I think with something like Alderman Serone mentioned, this gives people some, you know, I'm thinking, are, you know, community artwork, whatever, exactly, have a contest for it, people vote on it. It brings this whole new aura around, and it gives us an opportunity to interject with some messaging in there and some education as well. You know, in what shape or form that is, you know, I'm, I'm not positive, but I think it would, something like that would give us an opportunity to bring something to the city and say, hey, here, you know, here's a portion of what we're doing with it, oh, and by the way, we're doing this, 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 and this as well. You know, again, just putting another spin on it to, and, and not to, it's really just to bring people back to like, reality, get off the, you know, edginess of this topic and just say, okay, we all want less bags. Now, you know, okay, we are gonna charge 10 cents for, what, what do we do with it? And, and why are we doing it? You know?
I like the idea of involving the community in this, too, and having an art, like, let's get the kids involved, absolutely. I think that that would do really well to bring the community support behind it. The Environmental Commission did put $5,000 for bags in the budget, which is maybe 5%, so we can get those percentages going. That would be 1,000 bags, they send the numbers, and that's, maybe that's a good starting point. This is, you know, we're gonna learn, we're gonna have to be nimble. And maybe that's a starting point. Maybe we go through all of them quickly, and we can see them around town, and that's great. Maybe they don't go through, and we then know. I don't know.
Well, at that point, too, we already have our vendor, we already have our artwork, you know, it's like, make more bags.
Yep.
And another thing I would think is, see if we can find somebody local to do it, too. I mean, I don't know what the, the reusable bag market is out there and where everybody gets theirs, but if there's anything that's close or local that we can use, to me, that makes sense, and get them tied into that program as well.
Strongly agree. And one last thing, the last thing we want to do is buy a whole ton and have those end up in a landfill.
Right. We can always buy more of them in different areas. Abby?
Yeah, I wanted to second what Tim said about going back for some education and outreach and, and getting some of the messaging corrected out there. I don't think it's too late to start doing that. And I think something that, I know I discounted when we were going through examples of, of cities that had done this in the past, Woodstock and Oak Park, they had sta- they had a sustainability manager, or they had a paid, you know, countywide group that was managing the implementation of it, that was doing all the, the outreach and the messaging and the data collection and from start to finish and continuing on, you know? And so, and, and we don't have a dedicated sustainability person, which brings me back to one of the other points that's in the budget. I would love to still see somebody, some of the funds go towards someone that can manage the education and outreach, manage the bag fee competition. I love the idea of having a competition for artwork to get the community involved in that. I'll carry that bag around, I've got too many bags, I'll carry another one. Do, you know, the audits, I really like the energy audit idea and opening it up to a wider, broader thing, somebody to manage that. And, and for reference to the low-income program that is available in King County through Community Contacts. For, for a one-person household, the income cutoff is $27,000 a year. For a six-person household, it's $74,000 per year. That's for the weatherization program. The utility energy conservation program goes from $58,000 up to $96,000. That's the cutoff this year for those different programs. So having somebody that was dedicated to answering that call, if somebody wanted an audit, could direct them to Community Contacts if they qualified for that program, but then could coordinate it here in town, I think would be a great use of those funds. So I, I vote for, I vote for a consultant that could, that could manage those three things, the education and outreach, do some more analysis, do some more data collection, you know, try and correct some of the numbers that we got from the pre-fee days, coordinate the audits, and do a bag distribution, design a distribution program of some sort.
Good point for me to ask, because I think that, I'd like to know what the Environmental Commission thinks that they can help with those things that you just rattled off in there before we have to go out and, you know, spend money out of that fee, which I think we probably eventually will have to do for an outside consultant. I don't think we can do this all in-house or within the commission, but I'd like to hear from the commission about that. hear from the commission about that.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Alex with the Batavia Environmental Commission. So I did send out a memo earlier today. I didn't want to stand up here and read through it. I think most of you probably have looked at it and I love the discussion that's happening and I definitely appreciate the memo that city staff put together with their recommendations. First off, I did just want to say that I don't view this set of recommendations as like the only things that we can do. I think coming back year after year, and it sounds like you all are probably in agreement, reevaluating the money that is in that fund. And if there's other uses and new exciting projects that come up that we think of in the future, you know, reevaluating that. So I think, you know, coming up with something today is great. Some really exciting projects, hopefully, that the community could get on board with. And then we can move, you know, into the future with other projects if there's still money coming in. Again, the goal is obviously not to have any money coming in. That means that the ordinance is doing what we wanted it to do. So I just wanted to say I'm here to answer questions or clarify anything. And Alan, I guess to answer the question that you just posed about the BEC's ability to help with some of the things that Abby was listing, you know, I will say that we are a volunteer group, you know, like many of you, we have full-time jobs as well and other commitments. So I think, I don't want to speak for everybody on the commission, but just right now thinking about it, I think we could probably help with, you know, some background research and maybe participating in the working group and what some of the city is starting to work on. I don't know how much capability we have to really dive into the nitty-gritty of some of those items that Abby listed. But I think we would have to do a lot more discussion of what exactly we want to evaluate and assess and kind of how we want to move forward, I guess if that makes sense.
I think that that, in my mind, leads us, or should lead the council to realize that we're going to have to, at some point, spend the money outside of us, the staff that we have, the volunteers that we have on the BEC. And, you know, that's going to be something that if we want to look at those numbers or we want to try to have somebody else head up some of the initiatives that we've talked about, we have to go outside and get that. And I think it's, in my mind, better to try to find a consultant to do that and manage that than it is to add staff to do that or add that job to somebody else that's already here. I just don't see that that's, at this point, a viable option because again, I don't want this number to just keep growing and stay up there. I want this number to dwindle and go away. You know, I think that's the whole idea of this. And the reality might be in five years that the state forces this or the county forces this on everybody. And, you know, that then at that point, we're ahead of the game because we've already been doing this for that amount of time. I think that's really important that we think about it that way, that, you know, what we do here might be the model for the county or maybe even the state. Dan?
No one is talking about this. This is the, we're having the uncomfortable discussions right now. I would say the fact, like I said, the fact that we're talking about this is such a big deal. The biggest success story is a couple of seats down from me. Alderman Lancy, you were completely on the other side of this. You are now advocating for certain aspects of this. We are talking globally about really important stuff and I'm not going to talk for you. You have a different viewpoint now. Not like, again, I'm not going to talk for you. You and I had a great conversation offline and I learned a lot because I listened to you. I just assumed everybody thought the way I did about this issue and it just flabbergasted me that you would, why would you not want to do something like this? The fact that we sat down and talked about it was a big deal and at least people are still talking about it. So I'm going to shut up and listen to you on this topic because you're the person we're trying to reach. Is that unfair?
No, I wouldn't say it's unfair. I would say my personal views versus what, how I play a certain card I'm dealt is, are two different things.
That's fair.
I think we're, we are in a spot that a council before me has put us at. So, you know, these are the cards I'm dealt. I think, you know, I don't, I don't think we have the option to, and I don't think it's, I don't know, it's tough. But I don't think we have the option to just flat out, you know, repeal it at this time, maybe down the road, as Alderman Wolf stated, if it, if we don't plateau, if we don't, you know, drop the number, you know, we have to take a serious look at that, what's happening there. But I like the end goal, right? I want a better plan for my kids. I want, but I want to do, I want to, I often said this prior, but I say it in everything, I, you know, I want to live in reality on my way to utopia and, because I think that's the quickest path there. But yeah, no, thanks. And yes, my mind has changed a little bit. I'll give it to you.
I think we need to keep sight of that. One of the things we wanted to do tonight in doing this is another one-issue item on a county meeting is to try to gain clarity on how much we want to spend on the different things that we have in front of us and what kind of percentages I think make a little bit of sense more to me than dollar values on it. And if we don't spend all of the money in the things that we have here or we don't achieve all of those the first year, so be it. It's a, it's a plan, it's something we've never done before in having a fee like this and turning it around and using it for the initiatives that we want. And I think we need to realize that we're going to learn as we do this and it's going to evolve. And again, hopefully, at some point, we're not having to charge this or we're not having to figure out what to do with this money because it's achieved what we wanted to do and, you know, reducing the plastic single-use, well, single-use bags. I have to remind myself of that because I get caught up in, you know, talking to people about paper bags. I talked to a customer mine that was a paper bag salesman for 40 years, worked for a company. And, you know, he started explaining to me that recycled paper bags are harder and less cost-efficient to make than a raw paper bag. You know, and the realities of that when you look at, you know, he reminded me of a story I heard one time from an Archer Daniels Midland representative, that it took, I think at that time it was 4,000 gallons of water to make one gallon of ethanol in the state of Illinois. And how wasteful is that when we think about where we're at water usage-wise? So that somebody gets their subsidy to grow corn in Illinois and process it in Illinois? That we waste that many gallons of water every year to make ethanol? You know, and this is something simple like that too, that you don't realize what some of the unintended, you know, outcomes are of plastic bags, recycling, paper bags. So do we want to go through the list and pick out some numbers? You got something else to say?
Very quick comment, because I think you touched on this when you were speaking. I don't think we necessarily have to have the ultimate or end-all-be-all answers tonight. If we know of 20 or $50,000 that we want to earmark right now, but we don't really have a definitive answer on the rest, that's okay. We can carry over. It's not like we have to make a decision on every dollar today. For all we know, something a year from now might come down the road that we can't foresee right now, we'll say, oh, I wish we had the money for that. So don't, just as a suggestion, don't feel like we have to earmark every dollar today.
Right, and I think that that's important. That, I think the main thing out of this is when we decided to do this and not thinking far enough forward to, okay, we're going to have to justify to the people why we're taking this money and what we're actually going to spend it on. You know, the reality of that is that's a valid question and it needs to be answered. It doesn't have to mean that we take 100% of what we take in and we tell them what we're going to do with it. Because again, it's a new program, it's something that's going to evolve. If we have an answer we can point to, hey, we're going to spend X number of dollars this year, we're going to see what that does and how that works and how we can implement whatever we decide. And then next year, whatever's there, we do the same thing with and we get to decide that. And that's what they elected us to do, was to make those decisions with that money. Abby?
I agree with you as well. And was thinking this after the last meeting when it was so much, you know, we heard so much about the blowback for not having a, you know, the thing we were going to spend this money on. I did not realize people would get so angry about that and, but I also kind of wondered too, if we had said at the outset, we are going to raise this money to buy trees and we're going to do it to do energy audits. And the same people that just hate it because they hate it are going to hate it because they're, it's a money grab to plant trees and I don't want to plant trees or I think the audit is stupid. Like, I think the same, I don't think it would have changed the outcome if we'd had it all laid out six months ago versus today. I think, I think we're fine. Thank you for just mentioning that, yeah, these are hard conversations, we're in a tough spot because we're in the lead and I am really proud of us for that.
I guess on Councilman Iozzi's note, I was kind, I'm kind of cooler on the idea of using percentages for this because to me, this is a sort of one-off project fund. It's a, if we have a good project in mind and we have the money in the fund already, we'll spend it there. And it's less about, we'll spend this percentage on bags this year and then another percentage next year. To me, it's, do we have a good project in mind? Let's execute it. And it shouldn't really be percentage-based, but just what makes sense for that project because we might not do that project next year, understandably, because we might find a better plan for it. That's, that's a time I take and it's not, it's not a huge issue, it's just kind of conceptual, what this fund really is kind of thing. So I'd be fine with percentage, just kind of putting it out there.
Mark?
Yeah, I just, I just say a percentage is important because we don't know what the number, we know what the number was after six months, we don't know what it is after seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. So we, to say we're going to spend X amount of dollars on something and then, oh wait, we've got three times that in, when we sit down here next year and talk about it again, then now we're like, oh, what do we do with this? And people are going to ask that question. What are you doing with the extra money?
Yeah.
So if you do a percentage, then it's, then everybody knows exactly what is being spent on and what they have access to. So I would start off with 5% towards bags and, you know, probably there's got to be a percentage that goes to creating that program to do the, get the community involved in it. I would start off with 50% towards, and I don't want it to just be energy audits because I can go around, a lot of these people with homes that are 50 years old, they know they need windows. And if somebody gave them $1,000 to help with putting in new windows, they don't need an energy audit to say that my windows are leaky because they got single-pane windows. So there's, there's windows, there's, there's, we had the whole list of, I think the BEC put that together, all the different things that we could do. Just put them all out there because again, I'm in that situation where I would say, hey, I need a new water heater. Do I get, you know, you have the option that you could say that I want a, why did I just forget the name of it, the heat pump water heater would be an option. It's more expensive, but if somebody was going to give me a little bit of money, then that's the decision I make because, oh, that, you know, takes away some of that burden but now I have a more efficient system. It's got to be across the board because sitting there and picking and choosing, oh, no, energy audit is it, then somebody that knows that they, they don't know what they're, or they already know what they want and they're like, well, I want windows and forget it, that doesn't work for me. So I would just put the whole list out there and save 50% there, 5%, there's 45% left to work with. And those 45 don't have to be figured out tonight.
I think this conversation's been really good, but I think what it really comes down to is, you know, where we need to begin is with an, is with a consultant that's going to manage these programs, whatever is decided. I mean, I think some of what's been rattled off, the, you know, putting together a community bag to distribute some bags that, you know, we use at farmer's market. I think farmer's market would be a great place, along with working with some of these businesses on the language of, you know, too many of them, you go in and they, they have on their, they have posted there, this is a bag tax. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed with these businesses of saying, we're just asking you, please take the word tax away and change it to fee. So many people keep throwing, just like Janzit, Alderman Janzit did, this is a fee. And we all have to get on board to using that language because then people realize this is what we're supporting. But I think that with the bags, the outreach, and then kind of starting to take these next programs, it is going to require a consultant. I know that there's a recommended amount. Just really quick, was that 30,000 for the year?
Yeah, I think, I mean, honestly, we didn't do too much digging. I think that was just kind of based off of some other people's experience and knowing kind of what the cost of a consultant may be based on just this kind of initial discussion of, you know, the few points that we might want them to address. So I wouldn't say that it was necessarily for a time, but more for like the scope of service, if you will.
Right, and maybe we could put out there, like, these are some of the programs we're doing. Do you think, you know, within this timeframe, you know, is something that can definitely be reviewed after a couple year, you know, after a year, like, is this something that we can continue? But I think to at least get the ball rolling and some of these improvements made, you know, as I said, I'm not a huge fan of the bags, but what some of you have shared in your ideas, I can get on board with that. I'm not big on, I love your idea of limiting it. I love the idea of getting the community involved. I just don't want to have 5,000 canvas bags that we're just going to like willy-nilly toss out there and hand out for free to people that aren't going to use them.
Laura?
I just wanted to, with regard to the consultant, what we would do is create a scope of work and a request for proposals from consulting firms. So that, that's part of the process that we can do and say, here is, are the ones that responded and here is what they would charge for. I've got education programs, data analysis, coordinate the audits and rebates, and bag design and distribution. I think we'd be looking at probably an environmental, public relations firm is probably the area in which we'd be getting proposals from. It doesn't sound like a $30,000 project, I'll just kind of set expectations. I think it might be considerably more than that, but we'll see what we get.
And I think that would help us make the decision of how in-depth we wanted to go with it. You know, because we might get 10 things in a proposal and it's $75,000 and we decide we only want to spend 50 this year and that's what we're going to do on it, so that's what we do.
So my recommendation would be to kind of break down each project of what they may charge for each of those projects because then that's a thing where we can be like, okay, well, we only have this much money that we're considering, so maybe we'll take this off for this year.
Sarah?
I think that would be a great place to start because that, I think, getting the organization established with an outside perspective that has expertise in this area. Yeah, I strongly agree. It's a good place to start.
I think that, I'm not, I don't want to assume for the environmental question, but I think you want to be involved in those steps and that proposal and that way we get, you know, your input and your expertise from the commission to get that involved in this right from the start.
Yeah, absolutely.
And are some of you consultants that work out there that answer some of the RFPs that maybe you could help? Make some recommendations of what could be put in them?
So there's a couple of us that do work for engineering consulting firms, but it's more on kind of environmental engineering and ecological resource side of things. But, I mean, we might have thoughts just generally about how to frame our request for proposals and like Laura said, the scope of services that we're looking for, scope of work. So we'd be happy to certainly review and help frame that. Thank you.
And I think we, as the council, could also go back in and say, one year versus another, we decide that we another, we decide that we need $25,000 to, to do something maybe involved with the river or with, you know, some other project that we have in town that fits the environmental ecological side of it that we want to spend that money on. We can always decide that, you know, or any future council can decide to do what they want to do with that money in that respect, as long as it kind of stays within those boundaries.
As George said, we don't have to spend all the money this year, but if this is something we're all agreeing to move towards, we've got to start somewhere.
Well, and I think it's also good that, you know, when we get to that point and we have to go out to the public and explain this, what we're using it for and how we're using it or where we think it's going to go in the future, that it's used to try to improve some part of the, you know, the planet, just like getting rid of the plastic bags is.
Although I don't think we need to make a decision tonight by any means because it's, you know, there, there's a lot of things this can be spent on. I do think, and you, you kind of hit it there towards the end, is we need to pay attention to, you know, kind of, are we checking that box for people? Are we, you know, and I think this, and I don't take the word the wrong way, it's trans, you know, transparency. What are we doing with the money? That's what everyone wants to know. What are you taking our money for and what are you using it for, blah, blah, blah? So, you know, and I, I say blah, 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 but really, I mean, those are genuine concerns and, and, you know, one of my concerns as well, to be honest, you know? And I think it's a little too willy-nilly for me to just, you know, I, I think we need a little more framework to it. I, I, I agree that it's, it's hard to just nail down, I mean, for a cou, a number of reasons, it's hard to just nail down a certain thing, but I think we need to be pretty poignant on the top, not just, you know, anything random for the, I mean, you know, whether it's river cleanup, whether it's, you know, whatever it might be, but I think for the foreseeable future, maybe we do it on an annual basis or something. We have one main thing that we are putting the money towards. And yes, there can be some ancillary or whatever, but, I mean, that's just my feels on it. If we get a little, if we get a little too lax, I almost feel like we're taking a step back, like we're afraid to make a decision on it, whereas that's, that's where people are getting frustrated with us and they don't know where their money's going.
And that's one of the things that I dealt with, with trying to explain some of this to people that I've had discussions with. And one of them says, well, it's real easy when you tell me you're going to raise my sewer rate 8%. I know it's going into the wastewater treatment plant because that's what you told me it's going for. Or when you raise my water rates, it's because you just redid the water plant. I understand that. That's very easy. When you have money that comes into the city, whether you want to call it a tax or fee or however you want to describe it, and you can't tell somebody what you're spending it on, that's a difficult place to be in when, you know, the goal of it is to reduce the plastic and get that. But when you have the funds there and you're trying to say, well, we're going to use it for an environmental cause, it's very hard to stand back and justify that.
This is, this is what our national government does. This isn't what we should do, right? You know, they have too much money.
And it may be our own fault because we've been so transparent and we've been so frugal with everything that we've done in the past, we actually give people a reason why we're doing something, why we're raising a rate or a fee or a tax or whatever we're doing and exactly what we're going to spend it on. Our budget's real easy to see that. You can go through it and you can figure out where did that 8% go last year?
Even, even for the first year or whatever, we do one large community event and, you know, the, the bag design thing, that's all part of this, but, you know, we blow it out with some big, you know, community event that, that highlights, you know, environmental issues in our community. And then, at that point, it's kind of the rebirth of the bag fee, not a tax, but this is what we're doing and this is why we're doing it. We, we feel as a city of energy, we should be on the forefront of, of a topic like this.
When is the Green Night Out or Green, the Green Fair, whatever we've done in the past? I don't remember exactly.
Are you talking about the Green Night Out at the movie?
That we've done here at City Hall.
In a while, I think.
Green Fair on the Fox went away in 2015, was the last one, 16, maybe?
Carolyn's been doing a lot of outreach. She actually, this week, has a community conversation at the library on climate change. And then, I think it was a couple of weeks ago or last month, it was on, um, indoor air quality, was it radon?
It was with your house, like putting insulation in and all these different programs.
I'm just trying to think of a date that we could have out there that we could set and say, okay, if we're going to do the bag contest and you want to have a logo that's unveiled and you want to have that kickoff, tie it into something that we can use and, and-
But I think it comes down to the consultant because that's who we're going to have.
And honestly, Earth Day is a great day, but that's coming up in, towards the end of April.
Yeah.
I mean, for this year, it might be too fast, but-
I agree on the consultant 100%, but I think we might, it might get out of touch from a cost perspective.
But I think the thing that we're losing, missing out on is we've signed a lot of these compacts and we don't talk to our residents about that. And a lot of these discussions that we have are geared towards some of those items in the compact. And I don't believe you were here when Abby went through it and maybe it would be a good education for us to go through some of the things or I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. That could be some of our conversation of, we, we've signed these compacts and we're still discussing some different projects to do that could meet some of these standards that are part of that. And maybe that helps us a little bit more to be able to talk to residents about it. Well, why are you doing it? You know?
If, if I don't know, we've signed, the vast majority of our town doesn't know what we've signed, you know, because we haven't marketed it properly.
Exactly.
And that's it. It's just marketing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I totally understand that it's important for our residents to know how we're using our money and to be very transparent. I also don't want to just throw money around because we're like, well, we need to tell them what we're spending stuff on, so let's just put money here or there without giving it a lot of thought in planning. And I, like, I would rather continue to do the bag fee for the purpose and continue to educate the reason for it and then plan very thoughtfully about how that money is going to be used for our, for our town. And I, I agree, like, maybe we do need to review all of the things we've signed and agreed on that we've done with our, the county and the state and just make it very thoughtful how we're using this money. And I, I think a consultant's a great idea, at least to get us started. You know, that doesn't have to be necessarily a long-term, year-after-year thing. It's, it's to get us on the right path. And this will take a couple of years for us to really decide the best way to use this money. And I think we just got to keep reminding ourselves and our, our residents that, like, this is, this is new. We're figuring this out. I mean, Abby said it, Alan said it, and just ask for people's grace and understanding as we are hashing through this and figuring it out. And this back and forth and the, this is important. This is part of the whole process. So just trying to get, that's part of the education with our residents, too, is to be part of the process. And so I don't know where we're going to end up tonight.
We're hiring a consultant to help us work towards our environmental goals.
I'll write the RFP first.
If, well, but I, I mean, I don't know, if somebody's against it, but I think that's, we've got something. We're, we're using it to hire a consultant to help us work towards a number of sustainable projects that council discussed. And these are some of the projects we talked about.
I could, really quick, too, just bouncing off of what Leo was talking about. I had this idea and we kind of talked about it at our last BEC meeting, but getting community involvement and ideas, I think, could be a good path forward, maybe not for like an initial decision on what to use some of the money for, but I, I mentioned it briefly in the memo, but I really liked what Max and the city did for developing the strategic plan with some of the outreach meetings that were held and also the community outreach that was done with the downtown plan. And I kind of thought maybe something similar could be done to reach out to Batavia residents, hey, what do you guys think would be amazing projects that fit an environmental or sustainability use within our community? And could also help to educate on some of these agreements and compacts that we've signed on to. I don't know if it would get too rowdy, but maybe it's done more on a electronic forum, but I, you know, I think Max may be of ideas.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, we do have Qualtrics, which is a tool we can use to survey our community. We have our newsletter as well that reaches about 4,000 residents. So my question to you all is, you know, we can put together a survey, ask our residents, we can do things like, you know, if you had this, what percentages would you allocate? But what do you want us to be asking them to ultimately report back to you? That's where we could really use some guidance as well.
Yeah, so I just wanted to throw that out there as an idea. I'm not saying that we have to do it or just kind of another route or something to do in tandem.
I, I think that that would be something that I, I think we should do. I just don't know, do we do it before we get to the, you know, a consultant coming back to us and saying, okay, these are the, the things that we see in your community you need to focus on? If, if we feel like the consultant is, you know, feasible in, in what we would like to get out of it, I think that's step one. I, I think step two is probably at that point, then decide how much we want to go out to the community for input into those projects. Because I think that could get really crazy if we started to, to try to do that because the 15 of us, you know, here, every, every meeting gets a little crazy sometimes when we try to design by committee. It never seems to go easy. And then I think at that point, then we just start figuring out projects that we're going to focus on. And I think every time we do one of those projects, the key to the, the success of them has to start with communication, has to start with education for people to know why we're spending that money that we've accumulated from the bag fee.
Mark? I just want to be very careful with projects because, again, this is, people that are frustrated with paying the fee, want to see something probably personally in return. And that's why I push so hard for the incentives and the rebates and things because then that's, now it's funds available back to the community that they can use. We just say, hey, we're going to go plant a bunch of trees. If it's somebody that lives near me, they're going to be like, really? I mean, there's a, there's a billion trees right around me and those people would be a little bit more frustrated by that because they're not going to see any of the benefit of it. So it just, it gets very touchy and that's why I would like to, and I said 50% before. I'm nearly 100% on that. It's like, just give it all back. And I would look for a consultant to say, hey, here's how you set up the program. Here's, here's all the design details of how you, you know, what is an appropriate amount to give to each one of these different things for people's energy efficiency in their houses, rather than, again, sitting there saying, hey, we're going to do river cleanup. We do river cleanups every year. Different groups do. I mean, it's a thing that happens. So that already exists. This is something new. This is something tangible that goes back and will make an absolute impact to be able to improve the efficiency of people's houses. And it, and that's, it's tangible at that point. Yes, are, are all 10,000 households going to be able to take advantage of that? No, unless we have a million dollars after 10 years and then maybe, but who knows? And, and again, it's, in a year, we can, we can look at it again because we can, it's like rebalancing your 401K. Hey, this isn't doing anything over here. I'm getting zero value out of it, so I'm going to shift it over to this fund. But I think that we just need to give back and there's a lot, that this is the best way to do it.
I would add that whatever we do, whether it's audits or a combination of audits, trees and bags and whatnot, that, that that's what we're using the revenue for is, and that's the messaging that's out there. It's like, we're using the revenue to do bags, education, audits. The consultant is the means to that end, so it doesn't get out there that we're just spending all this money on a consultant. That's going to look bad.
Yeah. And that was, that was my fear is like, hey, we're going to have a consultant tell us what to do with it. We can decide that if, do we want to give it back to the community in the form of audits and, and energy efficiency? We decided that. We just want somebody to help us set that up so that it's easy to be managed by the staff that we have.
I, I'd go so far as to say, we, we need a consultant, not to beat a dead horse, but more for the messaging aspect and how do we reverse this ship, right? At least for me and my immediate neighbors and, you know, from what I've gotten, and I know there's been some positive response, too. So it's, it's not everybody and I've gotten some, some positive things from people, too. But, you know, the overwhelming feel is that we're taking more money from people, right? It's obviously a small amount, but it's, it's just, it's a government grab, right? And so how do we turn that messaging? And that's a, that's a difficult thing to do, you know, almost a political strategist type deal. But that's kind of what we need. Because the end goal, I think, is sound.
Where I, I know that Alexa touched on that. I know that from staff and from the BEC, they've given us ideas. What if, as we're, you know, kind of going down the line of looking at the consultant, maybe Max sends out anonymous where we rate which one of these are important to us? And then, when the consultant gets selected, then he can reveal, this is what city council feels, this is what city council voted on as the important topics to discuss. And I know that may be different from being very specific about the RFP and the projects and everything like that, but, you know, thought process. Instead of like sitting here voting all night, who wants this, who likes this and-
Awesome. I'll, I'll agree with that. I, I kind of feel like this format isn't always the best option for this discussion. Almost something closer to when we had the city planning session last summer at the firehouse. Almost feels like it'd be a more productive way to organize something like this, but also maybe having a system like that, like you suggest, of just seeing what people's priorities are in a, in a different setting than this would probably go a long way.
And that might help create the RFP, actually, like these, this is what council voted on.
And maybe even open it up to additional suggestions. I know I've had a few ideas floating around here and there that I just have been individually shopping around, but I don't know how easy those might be to implement, so.
Just to, just to clarify, there's an interest from council in a survey amongst you all to determine where your priorities lie with this and what type of programs you would like to see further investigated by a consultant. Is that accurate?
Like rank them and choose the top three.
For sure.
Yeah.
Does that sound good? All right, thank you.
So we should wait until the results of that survey before we write a request for proposal.
Do you think it could be done in a week where you type and send it out to us and we have like two or three days, kind of, kind of like our survey, which I got in on time, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, make sure you give us another reminder so somebody doesn't forget, like.
What, what I would say is we could get that out rather quickly. I can't give you, rather quickly is what I'd say right now. But from there, what that will allow us to potentially have is, you know, what we want, yeah, exactly, what we want the consultant to ultimately look into. So when we write the RFP, we can go, you know, council wants this consultant to be able to implement energy audits, a full suite of rebate programs and community engagement campaigns. If those are the three things that council has determined are top priorities in utilizing the funds and ultimately what programs look like, how that works, that would ultimately be up to the consultant.
We just say yes to this now so we don't have to do the survey and like what Max just said, I think encompasses where we're at. Is anybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think there's more than just three and I think it's more anonymous where people can choose their like top priorities or something like that.
I'm just trying to expedite this and get it going.
Pardon?
Maybe have it percentage-based or like order of operations rather than I or A.
We'll give you a number of options that allow you to both rank existing ideas that have been brought up tonight as well as provide your own ideas as well. And, and then from there, we'll, we'll kind of shoot an email around or either discuss it at a cow meeting and we can probably, hopefully there's some consensus among those.
Yeah, I mean, I think what, between what staff and BEC came up with, I mean- Yeah. I mean, I think what, between what staff and BEC came up with, I mean, there's some great ideas out there to definitely get started to work towards something and-
Before finalizing, I wanted to mention also for timeline purposes, one of the, one of the ideas that wasn't really discussed tonight that I actually really liked was the scholarship fund pretend, as an idea. I thought that was a very clever one I hadn't heard from anywhere else. If we were to do that, I would think we would want to do that sooner rather than later in time for students right now who are about to enter the fall semester later this year, who might be looking for those opportunities sooner rather than later, if that is feasible in that sort of timeframe from staff.
I can find out from Wobonzi Community College what their timing is on that.
Okay. I think that would be helpful just so we give folks those opportunities who, because that's like energy audits, I can wait till next year to do that in my house. But a student just now entering college could very probably use that support this year rather than a few years from now when they're already graduating. So.
Early decision FASA just closed and so colleges aren't putting out their notices for another week or two sometime in this month. And that's for the first round. Like as a parent, you can still fill out the FASA. Um, and that will tell you what you're eligible for as far as student loans.
Okay. Yeah. And I remember those days somewhat fondly in a stressful kind of way.
Took me 10 minutes to fill it out.
It's more the outcome I was stressed about than the filling out process.
Are my kids up?
Oh, that's fine.
Do we have direction for staff? Staff feels comfortable with that direction and we're-
Yeah. What we'll do is we'll work on that survey, send it around to you all. That'll form the basis of an RFP for a consultant. We'll be reaching out to Wobonzi to see what that timeline looks like. And that's what we'll kind of bring back to you all. Does that sound good? All right.
Thank you. Productive discussion tonight. Um, does anybody have any others for the Cow meeting tonight? Not connected. Motion for adjournment? All those in favor?